...citizens to participate in government. Our mission is to support voter education and voter rights. Though the League studies and takes positions on issues, we do not support or oppose any candidate or political party. Our goal is to engage citizens and give them a chance to learn more about positions of candidates who will be on the ballot November 8th. All candidates who filed to run for these positions were invited to participate, and let me introduce the candidates who are here. So, to my far left are two candidates for mayor, Sue Denkinger, Alicia Barga.
Barga. Barga.
Barda.
Barga with a G.
Barda, okay. Thank you. And two candidates for council, and you will be voting for two candidates for council members, and they are John Doan and Cory Springhorn. Cory Springhorn.
Yes.
Okay, our format will start with questions, so there are no opening statements. We received many questions on our website, and for the first one of those, the candidates will respond by position, so mayor candidates and then council candidates, and then alphabetically after that. After that, we'll rotate among all the candidates, so it'll be mixed, but your name tag says which, who is answering. Candidates have one minute to respond to each question, and then there will be allowed another minute after everyone has answered for follow-up or rebuttal or anything you would want to say further. And I remind you, you don't have to use your full time, just say what you have to say and be done, and then we'll have time for more questions. Following the questions, candidates will have a minute for your closing statement, and in reverse order of the starting. So, our timekeeper over there, Liz, will show a warning sign of 30 and 15 seconds and then a stop sign. At that time, you can finish your sentence, don't have to stop mid-word. We are not using any questions we receive that were unclear or hostile or personal nature. We consolidated questions that fall in the same general topic area. All questions submitted are property of League of Women Voters. So let's begin with our first question, and that is, go to Sue Denkinger. What do you like best about Shoreview, and what do you believe should be improved on?
I think what I like best about Shoreview, frankly, are the neighborhoods, and even before I moved to the neighborhood that I'm in, I wanted to move to Shoreview, and at that time, we just couldn't afford a home here. So, moved to another house and then came back and was lucky enough to find a home. And I appreciate my small little neighborhood, so I appreciate that and the amenities. My family used the parks and trails for years. The schools here are excellent, my kids attended the public schools, I also liked that as well. And I think the sense of community that I feel here, whether it's in your church community or neighborhood, I think there's a real sense of ownership and pride and community in Shoreview, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Alicia Barga.
Yeah, wow, I just want to echo what Sue said. I love the parks and trails. We're a really tight-knit community here in Shoreview. I love the people, and yeah, there's a lot to love about Shoreview. Sorry, there was a second part to that question?
And what could be improved on?
What can be improved? I'll pass on that. We'll get to that later.
Okay, now, next to our two council candidates, Cory Springhorn, go next.
I started attending a church in Shoreview before I lived in Shoreview, so I lived in St. Paul at that time, and so that was one of the things that drew me here, and kind of looking for a place to live, really was impressed by the variety of housing options in the city. Certainly, the parks, the trails, the community center was a big draw, since we had very young children at that time. And certainly, two excellent school districts, the Mounds View School District and Roseville School District serving the city was also a big draw for us. Certainly, there's always things that we could improve on, and I think it's just learning from what we've done in the past, things that have maybe gone well but could go better in the future, thinking of some of the developments where maybe developers weren't as willing to offer affordable housing as part of their projects, and so that's one of the things we've worked on, is developing a policy that makes that more of a requirement for developers.
Thank you. And John Doan.
Yes, thank you. What isn't there to love about Shoreview? I mean, we live in a great community, and not only, as Cory mentioned, we have two great school districts, but we also have two amazing charter schools in the community. We have great parks, great trails. You know what? The thing that I have to come back to is the people. It's really my neighbors. Whether we have a difference in opinion about a particular issue, I think Shoreview as a community comes together and rallies around our commonalities and what we can work on together, and that's what I really appreciate about our community. With regard to what can be improved, I think there's room for improvement. I think that, for example, I would love for our community, while we have amazing, amazing trails and a trail network, I think within our neighborhoods, it's not as easy to walk. We don't have that many sidewalks in our communities, and I'd love to see it be a walkable or a more walkable community, particularly within our neighborhoods. And then, also, one of the things that I'm passionate about is the environment, and I think that we can do a lot more to encourage and to incentivize sustainability within the city of Shoreview. Thank you.
Thank you. Has anyone have something further to add?
Well, I think, if you don't mind, I missed the second half of the question, so... But I think in terms of improvements, one of the biggest things that I have noticed is that I think that as a city, we need to do a better job of communicating with residents, and that's a very general statement. But what I mean by that is, there's a lot of social media that the city gets involved in, there's, we have a newsletter, we have electronic notifications, but somehow, you know, what might be happening in terms of, I'll use environment for, we are a GreenStep City Level 5, that's the highest achievement you can get as a GreenStep City, and that's something that's awarded by the League of Minnesota Cities. We don't do a great enough job of sharing that. We won a statewide sustainability award in 2019 for our Water Smart program, and I think we can do a lot better job with that, as well as with public safety, to share information with residents, and we just have to figure out a way to connect with what people might be looking for and what we provide. Thank you.
Thank you. And next to answer, John Doan.
Yes, is this a rebuttal, or is this a new question?
Oh, it's a rebuttal if you choose.
No, thank you.
If anyone chooses.
I'm good, thank you.
Okay, in that case, we'll go to the next question, and that is going to go first to Alicia Barga. And it's, what is your vision of what Shoreview will be like in 10 years?
My vision for Shoreview for 10 years is that we are ecologically responsible in our future development, that it is balanced, that residents have a say, that their voices are heard in how that development is, how that, how we develop Shoreview. We want to hear the voices of the residents on that, and just improving on what we have now.
Thank you. John Doan, the question goes to you now.
Oh, thank you. Shoreview in 10 years, I think that if we can sustain what we have and build upon the legacy of the many great leaders, as well as the visionaries that have built Shoreview that said, you know, we want to protect our open spaces, we want to protect our water quality, we want to build a community center that is the gem of the North Metro, that people from all over, from other cities, would want to come to, that we build and invest in a destination playground where our families and our kids can come together. That's what I'd like to see more of, and I think that we're on the path. One thing in particular that I'd love to see in the next 10 years is for the city of Shoreview to realize our vision for a town center. This is envisioned to be a multi-use, walkable area between Lexington to Victoria, between, and north of 96. So, just to the east, or I'm sorry, just to the west of the community center, of creating a space where people can come together and have more of a downtown town center feel. Thank you.
Thank you. Question goes next to Sue Denkinger.
Okay. I'm going to build a little bit on what John said, and we have for many years had on our plans for the Economic Development Commission and Authority a town center, and it was contingent on a couple areas that are not currently available, et cetera. But I think when I look out 10 years, that something that builds upon what we've got here at our community center, which is heavily used, not by us but other people in the metro area, the playground, the new restaurant down on Churchill Street Restaurant, and then the just opened today, Cofezian Art Trust, I think there are pockets of opportunity here that could create that. So, I also could see that we would have more engagement with citizens in maybe environmental programs. So what I mean by that is, we have some things that are offered by the Environmental Quality Commission, we've got some, I'll finish my sentence, we've got some opportunity to build more environmental options and opportunities for citizens, and I envision in 10 years we will be closer to that.
Thank you. Cory Springhorn.
I knew John was going to get to the town center before I would get there, because he loves that concept, as do I, and other than that, I would hope that Shoreview won't look or feel a lot different in 10 years, with the understanding that population will continue to increase, and so there will be some additional need for higher-density housing in some areas than are there now, but for the most part, most of our neighborhoods shouldn't see that, you know, within them, will be on the main arteries. And I think we'll continue to become more diverse racially, ethnically, and so my hope is that we continue to have a very volunteer-oriented populace, and we'll continue to have people, including a more diverse group of people, serving honor committees and commissions and nonprofits and other organizations that benefit the work of the city.
Thank you. Anybody have someone, anything further to add? We'll go to our next question, and it will go first to Cory Springhorn. Do you support the development of new apartment buildings in the city? And why?
So, what I have to make clear to everybody is that the city council operates in a quasi-judicial capacity, and so in any situation where an apartment building is proposed, we are not only not allowed to express an opinion, we're not allowed to have an opinion until everyone has had the chance to have their due process and have their say. So, if a project comes to us, I would definitely want to hear the opinions of everyone involved, from the developers, to the neighbors, to the potential users of that building. We've had some built in the last several years that I think were good projects for the areas in which they were built. I attended the opening of Phase 2 of the Edison yesterday, and that looks like a beautiful place and fits well into the community there. There's continuing demand for apartments, and so there likely will be other proposals. In fact, we know that that's likely to be part of Phase 2 of the former Deluxe Campus on Victoria South of 694, and so I will support projects if they fit well into the community and they prove to be the right project for the right place.
Thank you. And next to answers, Sue, Alicia Barga.
So my answer is yes and no. I think, again, I think we need balanced development, so we need, yes, we've had some apartments built recently, but now I feel like we need to move on and focus our development on multi, or dense, sorry, multi-unit housing that is for sale, that people can purchase. You know, people want to move into Shoreview, they want to stay, they want to put down roots, they want to, you know, have their kids go to the schools in our district. So, one, I think it needs to be balanced, so I'm not against apartments, but I think it needs to be a balance overall, and I think we need multiple options for housing in Shoreview, and it needs to be done ecologically.
Thank you. The question goes to John Doan.
I am affirm yes and yes on this. Yes, we need more apartments, but yes, we need more villa homes, yes, we need more townhomes, yes, we need more housing options. We need more affordable housing options as well in the city of Shoreview. I know that for a teacher that is just starting out in their career, a lot of teachers who are starting at maybe $40,000 or $50,000 find it hard to find a place to even live in Shoreview if they're going to teach in the Mounds View or Roseville School District, or teach at one of our other two charter schools. If you're a first responder, if you're a paramedic, we want you to live in our community, and so we need to provide those options for people. If you can believe this, affordable housing in the city of Shoreview at 80% of the area median income, that's approximately $80,000 for a family of four. We need to make sure that we can provide housing and we have housing options for a family of four that makes only $80,000. I think that that's the right thing to do for our community.
Thank you. Sue Denkinger.
I support apartment buildings, new ones, depending on, so it's, I don't want to say a yes or no answer, but it depends on the situation and the circumstances. Just for some perspective, across the metro area, there are a lot of apartment buildings being built, and I hear this from surrounding communities, why all these apartments, why all these rentals? And what I hadn't known in Shoreview was that for 25 years, we did not build an apartment building. Between the late '70s and about 2006, there were not apartment buildings being built. So, there is, and there is also a shortage of housing across the metro, so there may be the need still for apartment buildings. I would also like to see homeownership opportunities, and in fact, in a conversation we had at the council with the recent developer, that is exactly what we asked for. We said, we've got a lot of rental opportunities, but we really don't have villas for people, for example, that wanted to downsize, and we don't have a lot of homeownership opportunities, and part of that is market demand, but we are starting to ask developers for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone have something further to offer? John Doan?
Yes, I'd like to build off of what the other members here have said, which is that homeownership is important, and I think that, for example, we have an apartment building here in the city, Applewood Point, where I believe the residents are owners of their units. I'm looking to double-check with others here, but that is my understanding.
Cooperative.
Yeah, that it is a cooperative. And so there are models for having more multifamily housing or more dense housing that is owner-occupied. I'm not sure what the economics of that is right now in the marketplace, but we have one in the city, and I think we can hold that up as an example of homeownership that also has a higher-density type of feel to it.
So I would like to add on that, that yes, I agree with the need. For me, the key component of that is that it needs to fit in the character of the neighborhood, that we don't just plunk a sky, you know, a high-rise apartment in the middle of a residential neighborhood. So that would be the caveat for me on that.
Sue Denkinger.
Yes, Mary, thank you. The one other thing, too, that I did want to add is that I've heard from a number of people that they really are interested in villas, and I've also heard from some people, we don't want villas. So I think there's, you know, different perspectives in the neighborhood, or in different neighborhoods or different people's perspectives. But my point in this is that when I think about villas and townhomes and condominiums too, as being an option for homeownership, one of the appealing things about that is they really have a smaller environmental footprint, they use the land space better. I was recently at an open house where the Sierra Club was talking about how single-family homes, although those have always been the model for us, are not that environmentally friendly for a number of reasons, surface, you know, impervious surface. So villas and condos and townhomes also can provide that environmental benefit. Thank you.
Thank you. Anymore? Okay, we'll go to the next question, and John Doan will be the first to answer on that How do you balance the increased need for senior and other types of housing with the importance of maintaining quality green space, public parks, and the character of the city and its neighborhoods? And you may have touched on that in your previous answers.
Yes, I think that this is, as many people in the community know, it's a hot topic for us, and it's, it is about balance, and it's about trying to figure out, how do we address those trade-offs? One of the things that I do know is that we need to do that in a way that engages people and that involves everybody's voice at the table. I am not supportive of any sort of process that would ramrod anything through or that would have any sort of back deal through the city, because that's not who we are, and that's not who the city has been or ever, I think, would even think of itself as being. And so, I think that what I've seen over the last, I would say, maybe year or so here, is there has been some suspicion around that, and I would like to just make it very clear that we as a city are very proud that we have good governance and that we have a clear, fair, and transparent process, and we welcome all people at the table to hear all voices. Thank you.
Thank you. Sue Denkinger.
Could you repeat the question, the last half, I'm not sure I got?
How do you balance the increased need for senior and other type of housing with the importance of maintaining quality green space, public parks, and the character of the city and its neighborhoods?
Okay. When I think, the first thing I wanted to mention is, I don't think we've been, I've heard that there's too much senior housing at times, and there's not been increased senior housing or senior housing built in the last couple of years that I'm aware of, so just to clarify that. But to answer your questions, I think the balance is, you know, being mindful of the neighborhoods, and perhaps from the perspective of the city, you know, making the process itself much more clear to people so that they feel comfortable that they have a voice, because I think there are ways in which citizens can get engaged and have been engaged, but there's also a legal process the city must follow in order to not be at legal risk, for example, entreating developers and people who purchase property in Shoreview fairly. So, that's something else I, you know, think is an important consideration. So, I think you just look at what the proposed development is and work with the neighborhood and make your best decision based on that particular development. Thank you.
Thank you. Alicia Barga.
Yeah, you need to take a holistic approach and a strategic approach. As Sue said, you know, we would need to get the citizens involved in that decision-making process and have transparency about what's going on in the city. You know, from what I've researched, the, like, the median age for a Shoreview resident hasn't increased that much, you know, in the last 10 years. And so, we would have to look at what the need is for additional senior housing. You know, obviously, green space is very important, and so being able to maintain as much green space as possible should be a top priority and balance that with the need for housing.
Thank you. Cory Springhorn.
I think we're all very proud of our parks, and I don't think we've seen any proposals to reduce any parkland. In fact, we've purchased some properties in the last few years with the intention of expanding the parks in Shoreview, and one park in particular. As I said, we will see, you know, continued increases in population, and so there will be a need to figure out the best options for where that increased density would be. I certainly don't think there's any interest or future in reducing parkland, you know, certainly there may be wanting to build on spaces where there is open space now, and we do have a tree replacement policy in the city, so if people are building, if trees are required to be removed, that is expected that those trees be replaced. And I think, you know, we've talked about environmentalism and ecologically-friendly policies, and that's something we need to continue to strengthen in the city so that we continue to enjoy the natural resources we have.
Thank you. Anything further, Sue?
I just wanted to add something. I think that one point maybe that needs clarification between the city and residents is, how do you define green space? I'm next to, or my property borders open space that cannot be built on, so, and I went into my neighborhood knowing that and being thankful for that, and that was one of the reasons we purchased the property. And not everybody is in that position, and sometimes there are people who have held on to land for years and then decide to develop it, and as landowners may develop, try to put two houses where, in a Shoreview neighborhood 30 years ago, it might have been one house. So I think making that distinction of what we mean by green space is an important criteria, and this is probably a discussion that needs to happen. And I think with, to Cory's point, we actually have added land potentially to Bobby Tyson Park through the purchase of a couple of homes that became available. So Shoreview is not going in the direction of reducing parkland at all, but I think we need to really also make a distinction between property that's, you know, what size is green space, and also that people that own land do have the right to sell it, and the city doesn't intervene in those sales, and that's just something very important to remember. Thank you.
Any further?
Yeah, so Cory brought up the tree replacement policy, and I actually disagree with that policy. I think we should incentivize or encourage developers to work within the, you know, the landscape as it is versus clear-cutting and just putting in developments. So I would like to see that tree policy reevaluated and revised. Thank you.
Anymore further comment? We'll go to the next question then, and it will begin with Cory Springhorn. Do you believe there are adequate policies and enforcement strategies to ensure properties in the city of Shoreview meet city maintenance codes? How will you hold homeowners responsible for completing needed repairs?
That is a challenging question that we've wrestled with actually fairly regularly, including fairly recently. We don't have a team of, you know, 100 enforcement officers, we have a very small, we have basically one code enforcement officer and sometimes an intern that can help out with that. So it's really a complaint-based system. If someone sees their neighbor is not meeting the code standards and they report that to us, that's typically when action is going to be taken. We don't have the resources of having someone driving all over the city looking for someone with their garbage cans out in the front yard after garbage day. So, you know, it is something we've talked about, you know, if we're going to have these standards, how do we make sure people are following them? I think it's something we'll continue to wrestle with, people have different standards. We are looking at ways that we can, if people have things that they can't afford to fix up, how can we assist them with fixing up their property?
Thank you. Alicia Barga.
Can you repeat the question?
Do you believe there are adequate policies and enforcement strategies to ensure properties in Shoreview meet city maintenance codes? And how will you hold homeowners responsible for completing needed repairs?
You know, as an outsider, I don't have much information on that. I will say, I think it's important to have those policies and those codes. So, yeah, I guess that's all I can say on that.
And the next answer, John Doan.
Yep. Thank you. I think that that question presumes a few things that I'm not sure is necessarily true in our city. It presumes that someone doesn't care about their house, and I don't think that that's necessarily true. I think that people are in tough situations at times. Perhaps it is an older adult who maybe just had something, a life event happen, that isn't able to mow their lawn. And so I think that what we need to do as a city is to really try to lift up people and to find ways to do that. We have a program called the Shine Program in the city, that, yes, it's identified through a complaint process typically, but then the Shine Program really tries to connect with the residents to figure out, how do we support them? We also are considering a forgivable loan program for small grants to homeowners, up to $500, to perhaps provide for that paint and the supplies, so that then the local church can work with that resident to maybe get that new coat of paint on their house and to make- to make those improvements. So I think we should approach this as a way of bringing people together and helping people versus being punitive.
Thank you. Sue Denginger.
I wanted to build a little bit on what John said. First of all, we do have the Shine Program. I, I do believe we should, that we have adequate policies. In fact, there would be some that would argue that were almost invasive and why are you, why do you care where my trash can is? That doesn't affect anyone else. So there are definitely differing points of view, but, but I do think we have adequate policies and codes in place. What we did find out, we did a housing survey in Shoreview within the last two years, and what we found out was there was a significant population of homeowners in this city that are financially struggling even to keep their homes. And without going into a lot of other details around that, I think, I agree with John, and we found this recently through our Shine Program, that sometimes there are people who, they can live with it, their neighbors haven't complained, and they don't have the money to fix it. So I think this grant program we're looking at will, will hopefully address that in a very respectful and private way. But in terms of holding people responsible, we do, if needed, work to have citations. We try to avoid that, but we will do that if a property owner is not in compliance, and that's voted on by the city council.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything further from anyone?
That's, sorry, I should prob, I ran out of time though, so I had to do it this way. But I think the other thing is, with programs like this too, Cory raised a really good point. We have existing city staff that, that are assigned to do that, but that's across a great many residents. And we, when we have interns in, they'll help with the Shine Program, either working with neighborhoods or inspecting properties and that kind of thing. But if we really wanted to wholeheartedly be proactively investigating or even working more closely on an individual basis with homeowners, we may need to look at, at hiring staff for that. So, and it's, it's a trade-off in a way, and so far we've not heard enough from the community that, that is wrong or that is out of line, that they're looking for us to hire additional staff. Thank you.
Further? Okay, the next question, Sue Denginger will begin. What changes are needed in the city's development code to fulfill the goals of the 2040 Comprehensive Plan, such as improving recreational amenities, preserving citizens' quality of life, and strengthening environmental protections?
Could you repeat the question?
The, what changes are needed in the city's development code to fulfill goals of the 2040 Comprehensive Plan, such as improving recreational amenities, preserving citizens' quality of life, and strengthening environmental protections?
Okay, that's a good question. It's a very general question because the Comprehensive Plan is a huge document, and it could go in a number of areas. So, but I'll, I'll talk to the environmental piece of that. I think that when we talked about looking out at Shoreview in 10, 10 years from now, if we were looking for greater commitment from, whether it's developers or if we were trying to incent citizens to more fully embrace, for example, sustainable products when they're building a home or when they're remodeling a home, we don't have much in our city code around requiring that. We are hoping that people would do that. In the Comprehensive Plan, we talk about a number of things that environmentally would be beneficial, and when we're doing that, we're looking out a number of years ahead. That's the whole point of the Comprehensive Plan and committing to what, for example, the Met Council is looking at. However, I think in terms of environmental, we would have to require citizens to do that or to develop, developers to do that, and that may be something we want to look at.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Question goes to John Doan.
Thanks. That is a wonderful question, and I, I know that there are not many people who've probably read the Development Code, and I have to say that I'm one of those geeks that have. I actually have the five-inch binder that is our Development Code because I served on the Planning Commission and was chair. I also have the three-inch binder that is our 2040 Comp Plan and worked on that for over two years when I was on the Planning Commission. So I understand that those are hefty documents, and I don't expect anybody, a citizen of Shoreview to necessarily crack that open and to be able to quote on page 90, third paragraph, that it talks about the environmental protections or the sustainability in our community. That said, I don't think that we necessarily need more change in the Development Code. I think we need to actually work forward on the Development Code, and I'll describe it in two ways. The first is action that we recently took as a city council to adopt an inclusionary zoning policy. And then the second is that I think that where it's not adding to it, it's really working in addition, or it's, it's, it is going deeper into the Development Code, and it's the support through a climate action plan. I'd love to see us adopt a climate action plan for the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Alicia Barga.
Yeah, I think any changes to the Development Code need to involve the citizens. Again, I go back to transparency and involving citizens and having their voices be heard. So, no, they may not have cracked it open and, and read it cover to cover, but I think we need to have more engagement with citizens on the future of our city.
Cory Springhorn.
As far as specific, excuse me, changes to the code, I'm not thinking of any that come to mind, certainly when you talk about parks. We do have a, a park master plan in the works that will guide enhancements and improvements to our, all of the city's parks over the next 10 to 15 years. But thinking of, of environmental issues and climate change being a crisis increasingly, so I think there are opportunities for us to look at what else we can do in that area. And I think as a model, the policy I referenced before, where we are requiring developers to devote a certain percentage of multifamily units to affordable housing in order to access financial incentives from the city, that may be something we need to formalize in terms of sustainability as well, in order to get TIF money or other incentives from the city, tax abatement, that we would require certain levels of environmental commitment.
Thank you. Something further, Sue?
I do, I just wanted to add something. I know John had mentioned a climate action plan, and one of the things, we set city council goals that are available to the public, and this year, one of the goals was around climate action and should we be looking at a climate action plan? And where we started this year was to say, we need to be, do a better job of communicating out what the city is doing already to maintain their Level 5 of the Green Step Cities and just some of the things that are the regular part of doing business in the Public Works Department, how to reduce salt, those types of things. So we do, we thought that was the first thing that we needed to do, is do a better job of, of somehow pushing that information out to the public so they know, because they're things they can really be proud of. But we thought, we also looked at climate action plans of a couple surrounding cities because that would be the next step of saying, is this really something that would be of help to us, something that we could work on now in identifying issues that we think are going to be affecting us five, 10 years from now? Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further? Anyone else?
Just because Alicia mentioned that involvement of the citizens and getting people involved and engaged is important, I just, that made me think of the, the 2040 Comprehensive Plan development and how exciting it was to see the number of people throughout the city that became involved in that, people that serve on our committees and commissions that each had a part to play in that, as well as just public meetings. The number of people that, we had one meeting here that I wanted to come in and just stand in the back and listen, but I couldn't even get in the room. I had to stand outside the council chambers. And so the number of people in this community who care deeply about it and are willing to engage in those types of things is, is fantastic. And people filling out online surveys, that really did give us a, a much better Comprehensive Plan than if it had just been, you know, the city council and the Planning Commission, you know, sitting here and staring at each other. We, we really depend on, on the public input, and it, it has never led us astray.
Thank you. Any further?
Sort of on that note, Cory mentioned a survey, and I'm assuming you meant specifically about the 2040 Plan, but just in general with city communications, I recently learned that a survey went out to residents, and I've lived here for 27 years and I've never had a survey. I've been told that it goes out randomly every couple of years, and so I would rather engage every citizen versus a random survey going out.
Anything further? Okay.
Can I, I just, we'd.
Not a second time.
Okay, sorry.
Thank you, though. Can we fit it in your next answer, maybe? The, the next question will go first to John Doan. How can Shoreview best meet the mobility needs of all its residents?
My goodness, I think that that question was, was made for me because I am a traffic engineer by training and also was the owner of a mobility services company for older adults and people with disabilities called Mobility For All. And so I'm really excited by making sure that people have access and have the option to choose different ways to get around. I am an avid bike rider. I bike to work most days of the year when I can. I have an electric bike that I use through the winter time, and so I'm an avid user of our trails, as well as I do own a car as well. I have a, you might have seen it driving around town. It's a light blue Nissan Leaf with handprints of my daughter and wife on it because they put that on there for the slice of Shoreview, and I liked it so much I've kept it around. So I think that we need a lot of different options. I think that we can do better with transit options in the city. I'd love to see the A-line extended from where it currently is in Rosedale up through, through to the new development that is Rice Creek Commons, and that it come through Shoreview and that it not bis, or that not go around the city of Shoreview. And so I think that we could do a lot more with regard to multimodal transportation options. Thank you.
Thank you. Question goes to Sue Denginger.
No, I think this is really an important one, too, and I've, was our, Shoreview's representative on the Ramsey County League of Local Governments, and we've had multiple discussions around that because we don't have great public transport here. That's a reality, and what we have is actually not used very much. It's, it doesn't get a lot of use. So when you go to ask for more public transportation, it's a challenge because of that. But I've talked with some other mayors from Mounds View, Roseville, and we talked about we need to take a regional approach, I think, to transportation out here because in some suburbs, you can't get to a job just going west to east. You can go north to south, but not west to east. So it does prevent people from being able to live in a particular community if they have mobility issues. So I think we can work with other cities and communities and approach the Met Council as a regional group for solutions rather than just doing it as an individual city. Thank you.
Thank you. Cory Springhorn.
I think ideas that have been tried in the past sometimes can be looked at again, and I think my understanding before I was really, maybe even before I was living in Shoreview, I think there was a circulator program in, in the North Metro, and as all of our neighboring cities continue to put up more multifamily housing, maybe that's something we could look at again. If the, you know, if the traditional buses and those types of things aren't, aren't going to be able to expand into our area as quickly as some of our citizens might like, as Sue said, we need to look at regional solutions and, and work with our fellow municipalities to develop more options for our citizens that don't want to depend or can't depend on cars at all times.
Thank you. Alicia Barga.
Yeah, I would love to see Shoreview adopt a more European model, so where, you know, neighborhoods have, unless it goes back to development as well, has, neighborhoods have grocery stores and they have, you know, the things they need within walkable distance or, you know, bikable distance. And so I would love to see more of that European model.
Thank you. And anyone have something further to add? John Doan?
Yes, thank you. I'd like to also add that I think that there are some really innovative things that are happening right now around technology. I know that our neighbors to the east, White Bear Lake, just recently launched with some state funding, a autonomous shuttle project. So it's a circulator bus, it's a minibus that is self-driving, so it does not require a driver. I believe there is an attendant onboard, and it's doing a circulator route. It's hitting the Y as well as a number of the grocery stores and senior apartment buildings. And so I think that we need to be looking out to the future as to what other technologies can help us that can be more affordable and that's lower cost and it doesn't necessarily require a lot of, of capital investment.
Anything further? We'll go to the next question, and Alicia Barga, you'll be the first to answer. What changes to city streets and signage would you favor, such as reducing the speed limit on residential streets or including the words "no outlet" on street name signs?
Oh, boy. Signage is important. You know, communication signage is important. I guess I'm not quite understanding the question. Can you repeat it? So.
The question is, what changes to city streets and signage would you favor, such as reducing speed limits on residential streets or including the words "no outlet" on street name signs?
I think to the, to the point of reducing speeds on city streets, I think that should be a decision that residents weigh in on. I don't think that's something that, you know, a mayor or a council should make independently. Yeah, sorry, I guess I don't have much more to say on that.
Okay, Cory, Cory Springhorn.
We did at one point, I want to say it was in 2020, maybe early 2021, in a workshop meeting, just discussed the fact that there were more cities reducing speed limits on, on residential streets and kind of talked about the fact that we'd seen that in St. Paul and Minneapolis. Kind of felt it, it would be weird for us to do that as a second ring suburb before we were seeing it more in the first ring suburbs. So it's something I think we'll monitor, and yes, certainly if people bring that to our attention, that's, that's generally what happens is, is citizens bring their concerns forward and, and we ask staff to research them, and, and staff gives us options to choose from. So that's something I think we'll, we'll continue to keep an eye on. Signage is important, but we also want to not have so much of it that, that it sort of blends in and people don't pay attention to it. So where, where there are needs for increased signage, I, I think we, we want to look at that on a case-by-case basis.
Sue Denginger.
We actually, I was part of that discussion. We worked with, we have a public safety committee that we asked for their guidance, and actually it's headed by someone who was a police officer in a past career. So we had asked them to weigh in because there are certain neighborhoods where we have gotten feedback from residents that are, people are either cutting through and going too fast if there's too much traffic on a nearby arterial road, or they, during COVID, I think we all kind of experienced that people are speeding more than they used to. So we asked the Public Safety Committee for their guidance, and their recommendation was that we could do something, however, then there was the cost of signage, but they really felt, or their recommendation was, that we could leave things, partly because the Ramsey County Sheriff was not going to enforce speeding, or you would have to pay more squad cars to actually enforce speeding regulations. So we decided at that point to leave things as they are, but individuals could put up their own signs. So that was how we, we left it after our discussion, based on the Public Safety Committee's recommendations.
Thank you. Anyone have something further to John Doan?
Yes, Mayor, I don't think I've gone yet.
Okay, well, then you should go.
Well, thank you. Yes, when it comes to traffic and speeds, we know that, from the evidence, that putting up signs, while it can be helpful initially, that in the long term, people are going to drive what they drive. I think that we need slower streets. I think that from a pedestrian safety standpoint, particularly because on a lot of our local streets, we don't have sidewalks. So our pedestrians, the strollers, the kids riding their bikes, they're riding it in the street. So I truly think that we do need to slow down the speeds on our city streets. Now, from an engineering perspective or as a traffic engineer, there are these things called the three Es to traffic safety. It's engineering, so how you design the roads. For example, using Ryland where Alicia lives, Ryland, you don't speed on it as much because it's a really skinny road, and you feel kind of confined, and so you don't speed. You can sign it all you want, but the design of the road will, will slow people down. Enforcement, the second, that Sue had mentioned. And so with, with regard to enforcement. And so, with regard to enforcement, that's signage, that's the sheriff enforcing it. But we all know that that's not ubiquitous, and we can't afford to do that everywhere. And then, third is education. And I think that the education piece is the part that we really need, and we can really push on more, which is making people aware that it's their neighbors that they might be running over. Thank you so much.
And everyone has answered. Now, is there anything further someone wants to add? Sue Denkinger.
This is kind of personal experience. I have a daughter who lives in St. Paul, and I grew up there, and I remember getting tailgated if I didn't go 30 on some of the main streets. But they have a lot of signage now for 20 is plenty, and that slows me down, because I know a neighbor put it out, or a resident put it out. But I do agree with, I can't remember whoever said, that if you get too many signs out there, like I noticed St. Paul now has streets where you go 30, some where you go 20, and some where you go 25. So, I find myself thinking, I'm speeding, I had no idea what the speed limit was. So, I think you've got to be cautious around that. I would say, though, if someone in a neighborhood is having an issue with no outlet, and that people are driving down that road, I would let city staff know that, let public works know that, because there could be a possibility in their situation, if warranted, that that could be added to a street sign. I've not had that experience, but I think it's worth a call to the city. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, we'll go to the final question. We're running out of time, and it will go first to Sue Denkinger. What efforts should the city government consider for making Shoreview safe for all citizens?
Okay, just wanted to make sure that I got the question. So, what efforts should the city make to make Shoreview safe for people? Okay, all right. Well, right now, we contract with our sheriff's department, and we have a pretty healthy payment for that. And we can also add to that, if people feel like they are not feeling safe in their neighborhoods, are concerned about crime, they can contact the city, and we get what we pay for. So, if people feel unsafe, they could certainly alert the city. One of the things that I think is really critical that we do, and soon, and the public safety committee is actually working on it, is to make people feel safe, because we continue to be a safe city. We've got auto theft, or auto break-ins, et cetera. Our top crime, and catalytic converter thefts are frustrating to everyone. But I do think it's really important for us to share information specific to Shoreview community, and perhaps surrounding areas, about where crime actually is, because we read so much and hear so much, that I'm surprised if people really know what is going on in the city, because the headlines are all around, you know, the amount of crime, but we don't share specific information with residents about the current status of that. And I think that's a gap.
Thank you. Alicia Barga.
Yeah, I think one of the reasons that Shoreview is such a safe city is because of the people. We look out for each other, we're close knit neighborhoods. So, I think with the city encouraging, you know, not additional, but continuing to encourage neighborhood night outs, and things where residents can meet one another, and continue to form that bond, and continue to look out for one another.
Thank you. John Doan?
So, our family chose Shoreview because it was safe, and because we felt that it would be a safe place to raise our family, and I think that it continues to be, while we do see a growth in what I would call crimes of opportunity and thefts. And I think that we need to come together as a community and work with the sheriff's department to better enforce and to make sure that that doesn't happen. I know that as I've been going around and door knocking and talking with residents, a lot of people have ring doorbells or cameras on their doors now, because there is a sense that, you know, I want to know what's happening on my property. And so, I think that that's a good thing, that I think that people have now taken it upon themselves to have the technology to do that. And so, I think that in many ways, we're becoming a safer city because of those type of technologies. The other thing I want to also acknowledge is, I served in the Navy, and I was a Civil Engineer Corps officer. And...
Thank you.
Those who work in uniform have a tough job. And so, I just want to acknowledge the great work that those public servants do for our community.
Cory Springhorn.
I've also found that the ring doorbells are so much more prevalent. Four years ago, when I was door knocking, it was kind of a novelty to see one of those. Now, there's certain neighborhoods where I'm surprised if I get to, you know, a house that doesn't have one. But we are, I think, pretty well-served by the Ramsey County Sheriff's Department. I think we, feels like to me, haven't kept in direct touch as a council with them, or they haven't kept as much in touch with us. Certainly, at a staff level, there's a lot of communication, but it's been a while since we've had the sheriff himself actually sit down with us, and that's something I would like to see happen a little more regularly. The sheriff's department sponsors a very active block captain program, and that's something I think we can maybe promote from the council chambers here, encourage people to get involved in that. Certainly, Night to Night is a fantastic program, and we all try to encourage those parties and get to as many as we can and visit them. But I think really just the opportunity for us to take the input we get from people, if we're hearing about specific issues, that we do report that back to the sheriff's department. That's what we can do best as council members.
Thank you. Anything further on this question? Sue Denkinger.
Just to note, Cory mentioned something, that you can sign up with the sheriff's department for certain reports that you'll get in your email. One of them is the block captain's report, that will give you an update on the crimes that are currently going on. And those block captains also have a connection with the sheriff's department as well, in terms of, you know, enhanced communication and partnership. So, there are reports and the block captain newsletter that you can go out to the Ramsey County Sheriff's website and sign up for. And that really helps in keeping in perspective some of the things that you hear about in the community or read about on Nextdoor, to kind of affirm what some of the facts are. Thank you.
Any further?
Yes, you know, as much as we pay for law enforcement, law enforcement can't be everywhere all the time. And so, I think that we also need to be good neighbors to each other. When you see your neighbor's garage open, because maybe they forgot to close it, you know, after they came home from work, I think we need to be good neighbors and reach out to each other. If you see something suspicious, I'm interested to know, if we caught something on a ring doorbell of something happening, or a license plate or something, how we get that to the right authorities, and what they do about it. And so, that's something that I'm, that just this conversation has triggered for me, is that we better understand what that process is, and how you can make sure that that type of information and technology can be used for good.
Anyone else? Cory Springhorn.
We all talked a little bit about law enforcement, but I don't want to forget about the Lake Johanna Fire Department when it comes to keeping people safe. They do an excellent job. And as we were looking at our budget for this coming year, there is a fairly significant increase in what's going to the fire department, because they are continuing to build out their department with full-time, additional full-time staff. And we felt as council, that's worth investing in for the work they do, and we're happy to support them, and they do a fantastic job.
Thank you. Okay, well, we'll now turn to the closing statements. Each of you have a minute to explain your qualifications and positions, and we'll go in reverse order. So, John Doan, you will begin.
Great, thank you. I'm asking for your vote this election cycle, because I really believe experience matters, common sense matters, and your voice matters, and also showing up matters. I have over 20 years of leadership experience working with and for local governments. I've learned firsthand that city government works best when it's really boring, that local politics should not be divisive or high-profile, it's meant to be practical, fiscally responsible, and forward-thinking. I'm committed to keeping our community safe, vibrant, and full of opportunities for all people. My top priorities include making the city more sustainable, growing our tax base, and being fiscally prudent by making smart investments in our city infrastructure. I personally know how important it is to vote, because I was born in Saigon, Vietnam, shortly before the city fell in 1975. My family escaped as boat people and came to the United States to find a better life. We found that better life and that American dream here in Shoreview, and I'm committed to work with you to make Shoreview a place we're all proud to call home. Thank you.
Thank you. Cory Springhorn.
It's hard to believe in some ways that I've been on the council for eight years, because I still feel sort of new compared to the people I've served with over the years, but we've seen a lot of change. And as I've said, that is good to have new faces and new voices join the council, but some stability is good as well. And I think I really took probably the first two years I was in office just to figure out what's going on. City government is a lot more complicated than it might look sometimes. And I feel after two full terms, that I'm more confident than I was in what we're doing here, in the direction we're going, and want to continue to help lead the city into the future. I don't intend to sit on the city council forever, but I think one more term would be helpful, given how much change we've had going on, not just with elected officials, but with staff. We've got probably four senior-level positions in the city that will be retiring in the next two to three years, and we want to help the city manager to work through that, and so I ask for your vote.
Thank you. Alicia Barga.
Yeah, thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting this forum, and for my fellow candidates here for, I feel like we agree on a lot of things, that, you know, the vision for the city. So, I'm running because I want to give a choice and a voice to Shoreview residents. I'm a small business owner, I held leadership roles, various leadership roles. I haven't known some of the insider things that have been talked about here tonight, but I'm willing to dig in and do the work and learn, as Cory said, you know, it takes a while to understand. So, I'm willing to dig in and do the work. I've been a Shoreview resident for 27 years. Many of those cycles, there hasn't been opposition on the ballot. So, part of me running is to give a choice and a voice to residents. A vote for me means having your voice heard, it means increased transparency, that you can stay informed as a citizen, and a vote for me means balanced and ecologically responsible development. Thank you.
Sue Denkinger.
Okay. I'm a 32-year resident of Shoreview. I raised two daughters here who went to Mounds View schools, and just happened to volunteer for the city about 16 years ago. I had no experience, but I thought I wanted to give back to this city that I love, so I volunteered for the Economic Development Commission, which ended up being a 10-year stint. So, I had no government experience, and then ended up running for city council. I had no political experience, I had never even knocked on a door. So, this was all new to me, and I'm still learning. And I agree with Cory, it takes you at least two years to get that. But I'm going to use a quote I've used many times, but this is truly what I believe. I believe that good government just doesn't happen. I think it takes strong and collaborative leadership, it takes fiscal responsibility and an understanding of local government. It takes not only ideas, but the ability and the experience to have executed on those ideas. It takes a talented and dedicated city staff, a focus on communication, on engaging citizens in the community, and it takes looking ahead. I appreciate your vote in 2022 for mayor of Shoreview, I have big shoes to fill. Thank you.
Well, that concludes our forum for Shoreview Mayor and City Council. And League of Women Voters thanks you, the candidates, for putting yourselves forward for election to serve your community. Our website, l w v hyphen w b l a dot org, has listings of all of our remaining candidate forums, and links where you can submit questions to them. You can review the recording for this forum and all of our forums on our YouTube channel, League of Women Voters White Bear Lake Area. You can also look for it on your local station, your local Shoreview station. Thank you, and remember to vote on or before November 8th. Early voting is underway. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.